Okay. We, are we live?
We are live.
Okay, I'd like to open this Tuesday, November 15th, meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the Board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate, called upon by the Board or by the Chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hands on Zoom and at the discretion of the Chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. Those who'd like to join me in a Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. We normally have a public participation in the beginning, but because we are going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect--
Mr. Chair, should we do roll call?
Oh, okay. Roll call. Diane?
Diane Kennedy here.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Hillary Diffo here.
Paul Brady here.
Jack Creighton here. Okay, moving forward. We're going to go to an executive session for exemption number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body, and the Chair so declares, the Chair declares. The Board will discuss potential litigation and collective bargaining, police union contract exemption one, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges against a public official, employee, staff member, or individual. The Board will discuss an open meeting law complaint. Chair would consider a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have it made in second. A roll call will start with Paul.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jeanne?
Jeanne Hillary Diffo, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. Chair declares going to an executive session, which will be next door. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Cohasset Select Board meeting. We have previously been in agenda. We adjourn briefly for an executive session. The Chair would entertain a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to return to regular session. Roll call, vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are now in regular session. As is our custom, we start every Select Board meeting with an opportunity for any member of the public to speak briefly. Comments should be brief and to the point. There will be no discussion about that. Nobody can respond to it. And items may be considered in a future agenda, but not this evening. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, we're moving right along. Okay, I'd like to go to our tax allocation hearing. It was continued. We just need to vote to close the hearing.
Yes, your call, Director of Assessing. We need a vote to adopt a uniform tax rate, if you so wish, and to not to adopt the small commercial exemption. But this year, they changed it. You don't have to sign the form, but we have to report, certify the vote to the Department of Revenue. So the only thing we were waiting for was the excess levy capacity.
Maybe if you, there's a microphone there that you can speak to, so.
Public, for the folks on--
Sorry.
We're sitting there, tax rate, Mary. They want to know.
No, no, adopting a uniform tax--
Oh, adopting a uniform. I stand corrected.
Okay, the excess levy capacity for this year is $20,004.13. And that's the last item we were waiting for in order to conclude the hearing.
Is there specific language you need from us, Mary, for to certify the vote?
Not necessarily. Just that the Board would like to adopt the uniform tax rate for this, the 23.
Chair, would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There are a motion made and seconded to adopt the uniform tax rate. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion nays? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And the second vote is to not to adopt this small commercial exemption.
Okay.
I move that we not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded not to adopt the small commercial exemption. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition or abstentions? No, hearing none. Thank you very much. That was a very good presentation.
Do we need to close the hearing?
We do.
I move that we close the tax certification hearing, please.
Second.
We have a motion to close the tax hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We need to vote to ratify the union contracts with Fire, DPW, Library, and Facilities. Chris, could you explain that? Does any Board members have any questions on that?
So these are all three-year contracts. They all carry the same percentage increases, two, two and a half, three, two this year, two and a half next, and three the next. That's the same level across all of our negotiated collective bargaining agreements. Well, I'd say that library and facilities and DPW are fairly standard. The fire took a little bit longer than that. It was a long process. And I would like to thank the union for finally getting across the line. And I particularly thank Paul Brady and Corey Evans for helping from the Select Board for the final impetus to get us on the line. And also Kim, Kim Roy, our HR Director, was instrumental in all of this, and our attorney's girlfriend, Kenny. There are two more to go, and you should hopefully see them in two weeks. So we'll have all six done, which is very exciting.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion from the Board? Any discussion from the audience?
Can you vote, Mr. Senior?
Yeah, so you could--
Chair would entertain-- What? Chair would entertain a motion to approve?
I move that we ratify the Fire, DPW, Library, and Facilities contracts. Second.
We've had a motion made and seconded to approve the contracts. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to thank all the employees of the town, Fire, DPW, Facilities, Library. Appreciate your work here in town.
Okay. We've had a motion made and seconded to approve that. As hearing, no further discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries unanimously. And I'd like to, on behalf of the town, thank all the employees. They do a lot of work for us. And those who are watching, thank you. Okay, now, we get to the meat of why everybody's here. The Citizens Petition Navigation Bylaw. Now, a couple of ground rules. We want this hearing to, first of all, I want everybody clear what this is. This is a part of a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting. The Select Board called this to give the citizens an opportunity to understand what this Citizens Petition and Bylaw is all about. This is not for the Select Board to deliberate on it. This is informational. We've asked representatives of the petitioners, the people who put together the petition, to speak for 10 or 15 minutes to explain what it is, what it's all about. We will then hear from any members of the public, your feelings, because it's important for the Select Board, as your governing body, to understand what it is the citizens feel about this. This is not, the Select Board will not be deliberating on this. We will be not asking, answering questions on this. We are here to listen and to learn. If you have comments, please keep them brief and to the point, as just in any other town meeting. No sarcasm, no personal. If you have a dispute with something that's said, the dispute runs through the Chair. There'll be no cross-examining. There'll be no crosstalk back and forth. And I know, while being citizens of Cohasset and been to a lot of meetings, we all know how to behave. So, you know, that being said, I'd like to introduce, for the petitioners, Tim Davis. Then I believe Brian will speak afterwards.
Yes.
Okay. If you have questions of Tim, please wait till the end. We don't want to have this become a back and forth. And all questions get directed to the Chair. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. And I apologize, I've been directed to speak to the Select Board. It's a little awkward, but you'll have my back for a little bit.
Tim, if you stand over there, you can probably do both.
Can I do that?
Yes, you can.
That's all right? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for attending this public forum as part of the Select Board meeting, as Jack has explained to us. We're here to discuss the Citizens Petition Navigation Bylaw, which will be on the warrant for special town meeting in December. I am here not as a member of the various committees on which I serve, but as a Cohasset resident who believes strongly that Cohasset Harbor should be protected for the greater community to enjoy, as they have for over 100 years. Citewatt would like to turn it over to special interests that benefit a few, eliminating access for all of us. I feel no animosity toward any of those in Citewatt or Cohasset with whom I may disagree. My hope is, at the end of this process, both communities can work together to solve the many important issues facing us all. But to get there, we must pass this bylaw and pass it overwhelmingly. Cohasset has spent significant taxpayer money over several centuries on dredging and infrastructure to enable the use of these waters. This includes the channel, breakwater, mooring fields, and landings. Citewatt's intent is to take a large portion of these waters and deny access to all who have been using them for recreation, education, ecological, environmental research. The Navigation Bylaw, much like democracy itself, is not the perfect solution. It is, however, like democracy, better than any other solution of which I am aware. The waters we address here are not Cohasset or Citewatt waters. They are Commonwealth waters. The land where the industrial farm was originally slated to be installed is private property. The only land this bylaw seeks to regulate lies in part in Citewatt. The overriding question for Cohasset voters when the warrant article comes to the floor of special town meeting is should that land be used for the replanting of eelgrass, a buffer against storm surge, the home for indigenous fish and shellfish that exist there today? Should the Commonwealth waters above it be used for sailing, fishing, kayaking, swimming, and the peaceful enjoyment? Or should it be turned into an industrial farm for the financial benefit of special interests? These two activities cannot coexist. An industrial oyster farm of any size would be a clear and present danger to navigation and to anyone who might find themselves entangled in it. The Act of 1953, Chapter 54, which, there's a copy here for anyone who would like it, was passed by the Massachusetts Legislature, giving Cohasset regulatory authority over Commonwealth waters of Cohasset Harbor. The definition of those waters and harbor have been settled and used by the U.S. government and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for hundreds of years. The chart over here is the one that's referred to in the bylaw, and it clearly shows Cohasset Harbor with no boundary between Cohasset Harbor and Massachusetts Bay. No one knows what was in the mind of the legislators in 1953 who passed the law, but suffice it to say, they knew it was legal. In addition, Citewatt has posed no objection for almost 70 years, as Cohasset has provided public safety services for the area at no cost to Citewatt. Chapter 91 of the Massachusetts General Law states, "Private tidelands, tidelands held by a private party subject to an easement of the public for the purposes of navigation and free fishing and fowling, and of passing freely over and through the water." What the Navigation Bylaw does, in essence, is extend that public easement to the Commonwealth waters of Cohasset Harbor. Cohasset has no intention of taking Cohasset Harbor. To the contrary, Cohasset would work to preserve and conserve the harbor for the benefit of all. Subsequent to the passing of the 1953 Act, Cohasset Town Meeting passed a bylaw exercising their rights and applying it to part of Cohasset Harbor, extending governance into Citewatt to White Rock in the harbor. And I have a chart over there that will show you, if you'd like to see where White Rock is. This 1953 bylaw served as precedent, and Citewatt expressed no objection. The 2022 Navigation Bylaw, which we are discussing tonight, essentially extends this governance to all of Cohasset Harbor and Cove, as granted by the 1953 Act. What we are doing here is for freedom, freedom of navigation and civil rights, the rights of all of our community to use this beautiful harbor, as they have for over 100 years, and preventing the takeover by special interests for the financial benefit of a few. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Brian Host, who will go through some of the technical issues we're discussing here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Again, my name is Brian Host, 29 Heather Drive. I also am speaking as a private individual this evening, and not on behalf of any endeavor of the town government or the action that it's taken. I've been asked to provide a technical overview of the bylaw, which, intrinsic in that discussion, is a technical overview of the Act, which empowers the bylaw. But before we get into documents and specific words, I just want to provide an extremely high-level summary of this bylaw. This bylaw is a regulation that will prohibit fundamentally the installation of anything in the waters of Cohasset Harbor and Cove that would impede navigation. That's the simplest summary. And that means anywhere in Cohasset Cove and Cohasset Harbor. Now, obviously, there's a town line that runs through both of these bodies of water. And the logical question becomes, okay, how is it possible for one municipality to pass a bylaw that extends its authority across that town line and into the territory of the abiding municipality? And the simple answer is through a special act of legislation. These are not terribly rare. There are many examples of them. They span several decades, generally in the first half of the 20th century. And in fact, there are several in this particular area. The one that we're talking about specifically is the Act of 1953, Chapter 54, which precisely empowered this opportunity and/or right to put in place regulations and ultimately enforce those regulations across that line and cover the entirety of those two bodies of water. So that's what it is, let me be clear in what it is not, okay? It is not a claim on behalf of the town of Cohasset that the town of Cohasset owns any land on the Citewatt side of the lawn. It is not, or is it an attempted or implied taking? It is not a claim by the town of Cohasset that the town of Cohasset owns any of the waters in either of those two bodies, because in fact, neither Cohasset nor Citewatt owns the waters. The Commonwealth owns the waters. And the Commonwealth reserves the right to delegate authority over its waters in locations and to parties as it sees fit. And that's exactly what it did in the context of the Acts of 1953, Chapter 54. So with that as background, let's actually jump directly into the Act. And Justin, it looks like you've got it up on screen for the folks out on the web to view. And the audience has it as well. What you're going to see is that there are two sections, okay? And both sections begin with the same first line, which is the inhabitants of the town of Cohasset. But after that, both of the sections change. And they change very quickly and become very different. The, in Section 1, everything that's important for tonight's discussion is really captured in the first three lines. Because what it says is that the inhabitants of the town of Cohasset shall take jurisdiction over the common landings and the town landings therein, okay? So it identifies what the jurisdiction extends to. And it identifies specifically where that jurisdiction resides. And it's therein, the town of Cohasset, okay? So to be completely clear, Section 1, okay, provides Cohasset with authorization to regulate certain things inside the town of Cohasset, okay? This is not the portion of the Act that's relevant to the bylaw that's in front of you today. And it is clearly different from Section 2, which is in fact the language that empowers the bylaw in front of you today and that will be in front of you at town meeting. So moving on to Section 2, let's actually take a closer look at this so that you can see what it says. And it starts with the inhabitants of the town of Cohasset. And then it goes on to state what we're enabled to do through bylaws, plural, not one, but bylaws plural. So the ability to do more than one, okay? And it lists a group of activities that Cohasset has the option, but not the obligation to regulate. And then it says exactly where, okay? And it does not say therein, referring back to the town of Cohasset. It says very specifically, in Cohasset Harbor and Cove, within the territorial jurisdiction, within the territorial limit, excuse me, of the Commonwealth, okay? So those are two very clearly defined bodies of water. They're widely recognized on all authorities with regards to maps, charts, surveys, et cetera, both federal, state, and even at the local levels. And it does not in any way limit, these words do not in any way limit the right to regulate to one side of the town line. In fact, it's a clause that says within the territorial limit of the Commonwealth. If the intent was to regulate just the Cohasset side, it would have either said therein, referring back to the town of Cohasset, or it would have said within the territorial limit of the town of Cohasset, okay? So that's not what it says. These are the words that were chosen and deliberated by the legislature and ultimately passed into the Act that stands today, okay? So let's go on to see what else is in Section 2. It lists a handful of things that Cohasset may regulate through bylaws, which include regulations for the operation of motor boats, regulations for the speed of motor boats, and regulations regarding the placement of moorings, floats, and lobster cars, okay? So that's what Cohasset has the power to implement in terms of bylaws. And we've talked about where that power is granted. And then, you know, going on, it talks about the intent of this section. The intent being safe navigation and to avoid injury to property or to the neighborhood, and to lessen congestion in Cohasset Harbor and Cove, okay? So that's the stated intent of this section. And then finally, you have the enforcement authorities, which are the harbor master, the assistant harbor master, and the police. And obviously, it requires a bylaw to empower them to enforce a bylaw. So that is what the Act states, okay? And where the Act has effect and the group of things that it has power to regulate. And with that, let's move over to the bylaw itself. Now that I've worn you to tears with the discussion of the language of the Acts, what you're going to find in the bylaw is that most of the language is incredibly familiar, because it tracks the Act, almost word for word, with few exceptions, okay? So unfortunately, I do need to cheat on this part. So Section 1 is jurisdiction. This is simply a reference to the Act, which empowers the implementation of the bylaw. Section 2, duties and powers. This is, fundamentally tracks the enforcement language in the last sentence of Section 2 of the Acts, which is the harbor master, assistant harbor master, and the police. Section 3, purpose and applicability. Paragraph A, the intent language, largely tracks the intent language in the Act. Section B also adds an acknowledgement that there is a benefit of public access and a value of the resource in terms of recreation and conservation. Section C is a reference to the U.S. Coast and Geodetic Survey. Sorry, that's a mouthful. The U.S. Coast and Geodetic Survey, okay? Which is the federal authority for charting both the waters and the coastal lands of the United States, okay? This is appropriate as a reference because it not only shows the high-water line, effectively the boundary of Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Cove, it labels them consistently with fundamentally all other charts and maps of authority. But it also includes the low-water line and various depth soundings that are relevant, particularly when we get into a discussion of impeding or not impeding navigation. The low-water line obviously cuts the water sheet by more than half at a low tide and increases congestion. So it's important to be able to see that and know where it is relative to this bylaw. It's also important to know where the channel is, where the moorings are. And you can actually track this chart over history to see how those have become enlarged with various sequential dredging projects. So that's the reference there. The 1948 version, the 25th edition, was in fact the most current version at the time of the passing of the Acts of 1953. That's why it's referenced. And then finally, the Section D, or Section 3D, is a reference to Home Rule and the spirit thereof, which fundamentally states that local authorities have the ability to pass regulations that are more stringent than federal state, provided it's within their jurisdiction. So that is the summary of the first three sections. Section 4, the use requirements, fundamentally tracked the preamble that Mr. Davis gave us with regards to the historical use here. There's also a reference to two executive orders. Executive Order 181 was an executive order that demanded the present, or required the preservation of barrier beaches and barrier salt marshes, recognizing the importance both to the environment as well as to the resiliency of coastal communities. And then, really, the core of this bylaw is in Section B, in the second sentence, okay? Pardon me. So in Section 4B, second sentence, "The installation of anything placed in or upon tidal waters or affixed to land thereunder shall be prohibited in the regulated area," okay? That's the core of this bylaw. Additionally, this goes on to basically state that a commercial vessel that becomes a fixture outside the breakwater starts to look a lot like an impediment to navigation. So that's the intent there. Obviously, it's not meant to in any way, and hopefully does not in any way, limit the current commercial activities of our commercial fleet passing through, fishing in that area, or even going out there for a Sunday picnic on a commercial vessel, but not engaging in commercial activities there on flats. So that's the background there. Obviously, there are certain items that, or objects that need to have a place in Cohasset Harbor and/or Cohasset Cove. And so these exemptions are an attempt to anticipate those and exempt them from this bylaw right up front without any further discussion. And to the extent that there's an installation that someone would like to put out there that's prohibited by Section 4 and not exempted by Section 5, Section 6 provides a waiver, a waiver mechanism. So to the extent that it does not impede navigation, the Select Board, in consultation with harbor master, has had the ability, or has the ability, to actually issue a waiver and allow someone to proceed with the installation of such an object. and allow someone to proceed with the installation of such an object. Section 7 is simply violations and penalties. This is hopefully a mechanism that will deter people from ignoring this bylaw. Section 8 is simply the acknowledgement of what needs to take place for legal enactment. And Section 9, severability, simply states that if any clause within this bylaw is found to be invalid, that the rest of the bylaw stands. So that's the summary of the bylaw itself. I would just ask Justin to pull up the chart, the U.S. Coast and Geodetic Survey chart for a second because I just want to clarify something. There are dozens of charts and or maps that could be used as a reference in this bylaw. Because at the federal level, at the state level, even at the local municipal level, there are dozens of examples under different authorities that all show Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Cove as being in the same place and labeled in the same way, which is the words Cohasset Harbor are placed somewhere, roughly speaking, between Whitehead and the Glades, north of Basing's Beach and south of the ledges and the outer channels that lead out to the open Atlantic, okay? And then Cohasset Cove appears inside the breakwater, okay? So I mean, I could rattle off a dozen examples of different agencies that have this exact same fundamental map with slightly different details, but these two bodies of water located and labeled as being in exactly the same place. This is simply the one that's referenced here. And I guess, you know, with that, I'd like to close the same way that I opened. Fundamentally, this is a bylaw that prohibits the installation of anything that impedes navigation in Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Cove, all of them, okay? And this is not in any way a claim of ownership across the town line or, for that matter, the waters in these two bodies of water. And I'll end on that note. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Tim. Now, we're going to go into the public comment period again. If you've got the agenda, let me read it again. Comments should be kept to three minutes or less to enable all to participate. All statements and questions should be directed to the chair during the public comment period. There'll be no cross talk, please. Discussions during board meetings should always be courteous and respectful. Discussions should be combined to the subject under consideration, not the individuals involved in the debate. And if you have any documents you wish to present, you have to present them copies to us because this is a public meeting. Now, anybody who has comments, I suggest that you probably come over here. Just like at town meeting, we have a microphone over here and you can sign up and, you know, one or two, and that way everybody can hear. So we do ask that when you speak, you disclose your name and address and any disclosure of any particular interests. For instance, if you were a lobster man, you would disclose that or any other interest that is particular to you. So whoever would like to speak first, there's a microphone. Go for it.
Yes. Hi, Jack Buckley, 272 North Main Street, and a retired social studies teacher from Cohasset High School. I want to applaud Tim and Brian for the work that they've done and others who have collaborated with them. And I have three minutes?
Yeah, three minutes. You know, as a teacher, perhaps if you went a little bit longer and we got gold stars, we might look the other way, Jack.
No, but I do applaud the work that's gone into creating this bylaw. And I fully support the spirit in which the bylaw has been presented. And I've shared with Brian and Tim many times that I firmly believe that the best and greatest use of the entire area is, or the outcome of the area is to preserve it forever in perpetuity as conservation land. And that, I'm going to say two things as a teacher. One, I've spent my lifetime talking with students about the importance of collaboration, communication, collegiality, working for mutual solutions, getting parties in the room, and reaching an agreement that makes everybody feel good, et cetera. And there's part of me that wants to reach out to Situate students and Cohasset students and get them in a room and work this out together. And I haven't given up on that idea. And all the adults who would want to participate would be welcome as well. But as a social studies teacher, when I started to read the bylaw and I was given the Acts of the Commonwealth of 1953, like many of you, I said, what the heck is the Acts of 1953? So I started looking it up. And I found that. And I thought, what the heck do all of these words mean? So I went to the Historical Society, which I love, and I found Town Meeting. And I started, I had no idea what I was looking for. I'm flipping through 1953 Town Meeting, which took place after the Acts of 1953, the Legislative Acts, trying to figure out, did the people of Cohasset do anything at this time? And they did. And they made a clear and unequivocal statement in the bylaw that was adopted in reference that everything C-word of the line between Whitehead and White Rock was not included in the words Harbor and Cove as meant by the Legislative Acts of 1953. I can't get over that fact. And when I go in and I start looking at the U.S. Geodetic Survey Report of 1948 that goes along with the reference of the chart, I start to learn some things about who the Bureau is, the survey, the geodetic survey, what congressional acts authorize them, the 1947 Act that reauthorizes their work, and the mission that they have. And then I started to do a little bit more research. And I looked at another website about nautical cartography. And it says, of course, it gives you a great description of some of the science and technology, especially today, in creating a nautical chart. But it also says that there's a little bit of art to making a nautical chart, and there are human decisions. And the place names are very much a subject of the cartographer's choice of where place names fit at scale. And that's a fact of cartography. And so I'm not pointing out this in opposition to the bylaw. I want to see the land forever preserved. But I've been presented with a set of facts that, as I read about them and try to wrap my brain around them, I can't quite get over some of the hurdles that appear to be ever-present and very clear. So I want to interpret it all.
Excuse me, Jack.
And so, so that's it. That's my.
Oh, okay, no, I was gonna.
No, I'll be done. I'll be done. I don't need to go on. I will say this in summary. I am 100% in favor of Basing's Beach and that whole tidal area being forever preserved and free of commercial development. I don't think this navigation bylaw is the mechanism to get us there. And for those reasons.
Thank you, Jack. Next.
I practiced, so we won't go over three minutes.
All right, well, I'll tell.
My name is Brian Kimw, 8 Red Gate Lane, resident of Cohasset for 27 years, member of the Cohasset Sailing Club for 20 years, member of the Board of Trustees there for 18 years, and Commodore for two years. Both my daughters learned to sail at the Cohasset Sailing Club, Olivia through the race team, and Litra as a junior instructor. 2023 will mark season 63 of the Cohasset Sailing Club. Let's take a quick look back in history. Cohasset Sailing Club began as an idea at the April Town Meeting of 1946. The town bought Government Island for $29,000 to ensure its use and availability to the residents of Cohasset. In 1957, Herb Toll, then a member of the Cohasset Recreational Committee, started the process of founding the Cohasset Sailing Club. Mr. Toll believed that every Cohasset child ought to have the right to learn about the water and learn how to sail. The town fathers then granted the use of Government Island for such a program. At the 1960 Town Meeting, articles were approved to lease the land, and the Cohasset Sailing Club was underway. On July 1, 1960, the Cohasset Sailing Club's junior training program was off the ground. I'd like to share the official Cohasset Sailing Club Charter of 1960 to educate and train citizens of Cohasset and particularly the youth of Cohasset in seamanship and develop them in qualities of self-reliance to afford them opportunities for recreation and to promote their health, well-being by encouraging an interest in sailing. For almost 63 years, the Cohasset Sailing Club is proud to say no child has ever been turned away due to their inability to pay. Today, the Cohasset Sailing Club is proud to service approximately 300 family and individual memberships. The Cohasset Sailing Instructor Program consists of over 200 kids annually. That is the core of the program. The program starts with an introductory program for nine-year-olds, those finishing third grade. The program then runs for an additional five years, ending with students joining the race team. Instructors are college and high school students, many of whom went through the junior program and racing program. Our senior instructors are all U.S.-certified Level 1, thus meeting rigorous U.S. Sailing Association national standards and the Massachusetts Environmental Police Boating Safety Course. From the first minute this oyster farm proposal was presented years ago, safety was my number one and only concern. I come from many generations of Wisconsin dairy farmers. I respect all those who make a living off the land or the sea. I am not opposed to oyster farming. I'm simply opposed to oyster farming in the proposed area. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Your timing was very good. Don't be shy. Just stand up and go up to the microphone.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Bill Graham. I live in 14 Tilden Ave in Situate. And I live in Situate, and I overlook Basing's Beach. I overlook Basing's Beach and Briggs Harbor. I've reviewed the Situate proposal for pilot program of eight acres of cages for growing oysters and future plans to expand to 32 acres or more. I am a motorboat operator. I use this bay as access to the ocean. This bay is used by many people and groups. Navigation is difficult due to the low water and the subterranean rocks. At any day, you can find a team of rowers out there, a fleet of sailboats, water skiers, or 10 to 15 power boats, especially if the ocean is rough out front. It seems to be a natural placement, especially on weekends. Placement of metal cages of oysters in the bay in the low-water area or the mudflaps would endanger vessels using this area. I support this bylaw as it will provide safe use of this area and preserve a natural resource. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
My name is Nan Roth. I live at 7 Highland Ave. I've lived in Cohasset for 37 years. I've been very fortunate to spend every summer across the water in Situate at the Glades. I pay taxes to both communities. The Glades deed, which was written in the late 1800s, indicates that it extends west to Cohasset Harbor, putting Cohasset Harbor just exactly due west of the Glades. The beauty and access to the ocean here was the reason that we moved here so many years ago. The outer waters of Cohasset Harbor are the playground for me and my friends when we were young and for my father, my grandfather, and my great-grandfather. We swim, row, sail, paddle. We even tried to learn to water ski and to windsurf. We dig for clams. We fish. Once upon a time, there were flounder. Now, there are bass some of the time. We watch the birds as blocks of migratory species fill the flats spring and fall and endanger terns and piping plovers' nests there, monitored by the Audubon Society. Situate, thousands of kids, including my own, have learned to sail and row in these waters. It's a safe spot for learning as there's no telling where a beginner will end up when the wind comes up. The Maritime Institute sends us rowing boats back and forth there in the waters from May until October. The Sailing Club and Yacht Club race boats there. When the inner harbor is full, both motorboats and sailboats anchor in that area. My great uncle, for years, moored his boat right out there in the location of the plot that might be used for an oyster farm. Situate was to put an oyster farm right there in the middle of this area. The thing about it is, it won't benefit the town of Situate. It only benefits the three or four people, or five or six, depending how many, who obtain the rights to the plots. And each plot, the size of a football field, will block access to the water and prevent recreation use for sailing, kayaking, water skiing. No more pulling laughing kids in tubes round and round in that area on a hot summer day. These are environmentally sensitive areas that should be protected from obstruction and should be for everyone to enjoy. Why should thousands of people, including our children and our grandchildren, sacrifice their enjoyment of this beautiful spot for the economic benefit of a few? Thank you.
I must comment, this is a remarkably well-behaved town. It well, was.
George Baumgarten, 264 St. Cohasset. I am a member of the Cohasset Harbor Committee. I'm also on the board of Cohasset Maritime Institute and also a lover of the waters of Cohasset in general. But I come specifically in reference to my role on the Cohasset Harbor Committee. Recently, I had the privilege of co-chairing an initiative on Cohasset Harbor Climate Resilience, which was three public forums that we held in the first half of this year. And they were very well received. All the information is on the website for the Cohasset Harbor Committee. But that being said, what came about is, at least the findings, were certainly Cohasset is at risk due to climate change and particularly Cohasset Harbor has lots of vulnerabilities. No big surprise, people saw that a year ago with a major storm, and that's just one storm that happened. As a result, or partially, we'll say as a result of the forums that we held, the town of Cohasset, under the, I think, leadership of Lauren Lind, applied for a grant, which has now funded a study that is just starting with the Woods Hole Group to study both, to formally study and further study the findings that were presented a year ago around the vulnerabilities to Cohasset and also to identify potential solutions, of which there are probably many. And we're hoping that we get some good guidance as a result of that study. But specifically looking at the navigation bylaw, the reference to Executive Order 181, which was just simply mentioned, you can Google it, Massachusetts Executive Order 181, and it was signed in 1980 by the then-Governor King. King, I think. Yes, Edward King. And it was specifically around the preservation of barrier beaches with the expectation, even in 1980, the barrier beaches were at risk. And the concern was, due to possible climate change... climate change, that Massachusetts made it priority to preserve barrier beaches with the steel grass and other natural barriers to help provide a bulwark against climate change. So to the extent that this bylaw helps to serve and protect that executive order, I am certainly for it, even it will give, provide additional flexibility to the town, people of the town, to potentially implement solutions that come about as a result of the ongoing studies that the town is funding to help protect the harbor from the effects of climate change. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Depp, 27 Parker Avenue. I serve on the Capitol Budget Committee, their liaison through the Advisory Committee for the town of Cohasset, member of a number of harbor-related clubs. I want to ask for a better assessment on the risk that the town faces should we pass this bylaw. And the risk is the legal risk. I think we've made several assumptions in the crafting of the wording, but I'm unclear as to the level of risk for litigation that might prove to test those assumptions. So following on Jack Buckley's thoughts on collaboration and being collegial, I would hope that our town works with the town of Situate to identify those areas of potential I'll use the term weakness or softness in the wording and help us craft something that will keep us out of litigation in the future. Thanks.
Again, there's no discussion on the select board, so when we hear these things, when we don't respond, it isn't because we're taking a position, it's that we want to hear from all of the various things. Go next.
Thank you. My name is Tony Cignani. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen in town of Situate. And I just think this is probably an appropriate place after the prior comments. The Board of Selectmen in Situate is vehemently against this bylaw because we fear, as this person indicated before, that it is really expanding the regulation and the authority that the town of Situate, excuse me, the town of Cohasset has on the town of Situate property. And I think similar to any town, if you felt that a neighboring town was taking authority over a piece of property, that I think there is a serious threat of litigation and I think that this will be opposed and fought over for the time to be. A lot of things that people are saying make a lot of sense of us. We've tried to get together with, with the bodies of being and come up with some guidelines where we can work together. There's a lot of misinformation out there, which can be figured out over time, but I just want to make it clear that, that the town of Situate clearly feels that this is seeking advantage and authority over a piece of property or a piece of territory that is not under the authority of Cohasset and it will not be just ignored, as you would not ignore it if the town of Hall was doing the same to you. So just make sure that that's there. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. And you've spoken here before and we salute your ability to come across into what might be interesting territory and thank you very much.
Page first.
No, George, George, it could, George, it could be beauty first, but.
I'm one of the few professional meritists here in the, in the meeting tonight. And I've spent most of my life in sea and I've spent a good deal of it at Cohasset Harbor as a young man, growing up lobster fishing and, and bashing and whatever. So I got a pretty good idea what goes on out there. I brought a chart of my own, it's 1933 chart, and the heading at the top of it says Cohasset Harbor. Doesn't delineate the area around Bassington Beach and the flats as Cohasset Harbor, but I think I learned something tonight that the cove is everything inside the breakwater. Far as I know, the cove was from Atlantic or up to, where George knew work is going on and the rest of it was the harbor. But regardless, we, this is a, it's an interesting act, but I don't see any definition of boundaries. I don't see lines to the Atlantic. Where does it extend? Where does it go? How far does Cohasset Harbor go? And how much is that going to affect any lobster fishing? Some of the young folks that are starting off their career fishing, they typically, they brought their traps out in that area. Are we going all the way to the Glades? Are we going out past the Shepherd Ledges? Are we going out past, where are we going? How much, how much are we going to, to try to claim as our territorial responsibilities? I don't know that and I don't see any where to answer here. In terms of the conservation aspect of the, of the, of the act, I'm certainly in favor of that. I think that's a great thing. I don't think an oyster farm has any business being, putting out what they want to, because I don't know of any place on the East Coast where they have oyster farms on the open ocean, but this may be the exception. Anyway, if somebody can tell me what the limits are, I'd be glad to know.
George?
George McGold, 107 Border Street, Cohasset. Obviously, don't need to preach to the choir, we can touch on Tony. Anyone believes that it's a land that should be preserved, water that should be preserved? I'm the sole member of the Cohasset Water Ski Club, so I'm not the only one using it. So I feel it's important to, to preserve. We had a situation last year where there was a piece of land in Situate, they're both Cohasset-Situate, and quite honestly, people across the whole country thought it was important to preserve. And Cohasset residents and Situate residents worked together to save the Lakey Farm on Border Street. There were no boundaries. No one talked about boundaries. We talked about preserving something that was important to everyone. So I would implore the board here to investigate what Jack has uncovered and I think it's brilliant what Tim has come up with. Hopefully it works, but if it doesn't, we need to find another way to make it work. We understand Situate has needs for water, sewer. I'm on the Gulf Association and we know that North Situate needs sewer. Do they need to come through Cohasset? Do we need to give them something? Do they need water? So we've talked about collaborating with them, but implore the boards to do something about it. To sit in a room and don't leave a room until all the issues are resolved. This is one of a number of issues that these two towns have to resolve. Let's not get litigation on this issue and then get litigation on other issues. Let's spend the time and effort to work together. And again, I got to spend a lot of time with the Situate Select Board and they were tremendous in terms of collaborating and working on getting that done. And I believe that two groups should get together and get it resolved and get it done. Thanks.
Other comments?
My name's Michael Lane. I'm from, I live at 749 Countryway, Sutra, Mass. Commercial lobsterman in Cohasset and I really have no skin in this game, has been listening to see what's going on. I really think you're kind of making a mountain of a molehill with this. But we have a storm we had last year in October, this would have wiped this whole oyster farm off the map. I think it's, it's not going to fly there, it's too rough there. I've known these waters my whole life and it just, before you get yourself into something, I mean, it's just, my feeling is it's not going to work, no matter what you do. Eventually, these guys are going to get cleaned out, they'll lose all their money and they're going to be gone. So keep that in mind because that place gets destroyed during storms and it's not going to work. Like you said, the open ocean is not a place for oyster farms. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from Zoom?
We don't have anybody with their hand up or with their big hand up on Zoom.
Okay, just let me know if you do. Further comments?
Yeah, I'm Adam Donovan, 21, World Harbor Lane in Situate. I'm also a commercial lobsterman in Cohasset Harbor. I'm more worried about the unforeseen consequences of passing a bylaw like this. Right now, as a commercial fisherman in Cohasset, we're seeing the effects of climate change. It's not going to happen. It is happening. And we also have a shorter season. So to be able to pivot and make a move and pick up another fishery to help supplement us throughout the year would be very important. If we start passing bylaws and I know it's just going to slow us down and I don't want this bylaw, looking back at it, to be, to see it as the beginning of the end of the fishing industry in Cohasset Harbor. Thank you.
Further comments? Well, speak now or this is your opportunity.
Chair, we do have one person with their hand up.
All right, we have David Farag.
He's not able to speak.
All right, David, you can speak.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thank you to the Board of Selectmen, David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street. I just want to pipe in and just say I reviewed the bylaw from the sense that I was on the Governance Committee for the Harbor Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Harbor Committee. And when it first came around, we reviewed it and passed it to pass it on to the Selectmen as well to look at and approve. And I fully support this because I think it's important to protect the town of Cohasset and more importantly, its navigation in and out of the harbor. And again, this is the extension of Commonwealth waters from the Commonwealth through the, through the Act of 1953. So it's what the Commonwealth gave us as jurisdiction and this fully, and this fully expands that to be in congruence with that chapter. So I'm in support and I think we should protect the town of Cohasset and all of its boating and navigation within that area. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else on Zoom?
We do not.
Brian? Yes, at the end, when everybody else, then you'll, any clarifications that need to be taken, right? But does anybody else wish to speak?
I just have a procedural question. You said the board is not deliberating. Will the board have made a vote when town meeting occurs?
The board is, the board is deliberating. The board may or may not. I think it's pretty clear that we will have further deliberations and discussions on this. And just for people to understand, this is a petition before the town meeting. It will be brought to a vote because by law, when you have a petition with that number of signatures, it has to be brought to the vote. The Board of Selectmen does not have the ability to modify it. The Board of Selectmen can, in its wisdom, and yes, there is some wisdom in this board, we can agree to support it. And if I could figure out how to get this.
Swipe that up on the top, swipe up the clock thing. There you go. Try again.
Don't put any spam on this.
That's all right. Help desk is here.
Uh-oh. We also, I have a witness, I have a room full of witnesses.
Forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars. That was cheap. Anyway, the Select Board can vote to approve it. They can not, we cannot vote to approve it, we can recommend it, we can vote not to recommend it, or we could take a position which says, let's let the town meeting speak and we will enforce it. This town will have to enforce the will of the town meeting. So we do intend to have some discussions. If things came out, one of the reasons we're having this meeting now, if things come out tonight or in consultation with town council, that there should be some technical modifications made, we could do that or we could present it to the petitioners with a potential amendment to the bylaw. And that would be only handled at town meeting, an amendment from the floor. If we were to do that or anybody wanted to do that, best practices is to put it in writing and submit it around and to the petitioners. The petitioners have indicated that they would, you know, look at some kind of what they would regard as a friendly amendment. Let's say there was a technical legal thing that needed to be changed. That is possible, but there is no decision. What we as your Select Board wanted to do tonight is to, is to number one, provide a forum. So not only everybody in this room, but on Zoom could hear an explanation of the technical things and what this is all about and also give the Select Board an opportunity to listen to you, our constituents and our citizens, to listen to what you have to say and that will impact, you know, our deliberations. So in short, which is sometimes difficult for me, yes, we will be having further deliberations. Some may be in open meetings and some of it may be in executive session. The Select Board has not yet made that decision, but I can assure you that it's an active discussion and we had an executive session before this started and one of the things the Select Board did discuss is exactly that question. Any other?
My name is Mary Hawkins, Trish Island Road in Situate. My sisters and I own a piece of property that overlooks Bassington Beach and Glades and we are beyond grateful to FOB and to Cohasset for everything you all have done to try to minimize the impact of this proposed oyster farm because we really are incredulous. I've been going to pretty much all of the Shellfish Committee meetings to follow what Situate is proposing and we're really incredulous. They're actually talking about allowing four people, I think it's down to four, to really take ownership of a part of water that you can't, you can't go over, you can't kayak over because your paddles are going to hit, they're going to have holes up that you can't go through. So they really are planning on doing that. But unfortunately, unlike the Border Street farm, 99.5% of Situate doesn't even know where this part of Cohasset Harbor is. They have no attachment to it, they don't know how to get to it, they've never been there, they have no, they don't care. So I, from what I gather, the, the Shellfish Board and the Select Board are all in favor, gung-ho, and there, there is no if, sans, or buts, they're going forward with it. But I, I wonder, is it possible, in that spirit of collaboration, I think they're down to three farmers, three or four acres. Is there some, and there's really one farmer that's really been pushing, pushing, pushing. You know, is it possible to have, you know, not a, to propose from Cohasset standpoint, here, here's a footprint and please don't go beyond it? Could we have some compromise there? If they're bound and determined to go through with it and it's kind of their land, I, I don't understand it because they've got the Audubon Society, it's all roped off right next to where they're planning on putting this farm, these farms, the trash that's going to, that's going to roll in. I mean, it just makes no sense to me on any level, but if there is any room for negotiation, I guess I'd rather do that than have, you know, 20 acres or whatever their ultimate plan is. Thank you.
Francis Collins, 404 South Masons. Just a couple of closing comments. There's a lot of peripheral stuff that goes around with this that we really haven't talked about and maybe a lot of us haven't even thought of it, but just the one issue. If, if we're going to have an oyster farm just inside the Glades, have access to it, do you think that the falls from Situate are going to come all the way from Situate Harbor, come all the way up and around and tend to they always, are they going to go out of Cohasset Harbor? Obviously, they're going to go out of Cohasset Harbor. Where are they going to park? Our own fishermen have barely enough room to park now anyway. There's no room for this. If any of you have been to the harbor lately, you know this, that parking is certainly a premium. So we don't have any room for it. So that's just going to add another piece of confusion and obstruction to basically the safe juice.
basically the safe use of our area. And in terms of giving them a little bit, I think if you give them an inch, they'll take a feather. Brian? I'm. Okay, as part of the ground rules, we thought it would be good to give the petitioners an opportunity to speak at, at the end, in case there's some issues that came up that they can shed some light on. So I guess, Brian, you're going to do that, or Tim, whichever?
So I'm going to defer to Tim with regards to any closing summary, but I did just want to address some of the issues that came up, to the extent that, that I can. First, with regards to prohibiting lobstering in any part of Cohasset Cove or Cohasset Harbor, lobster pots, traps, and buoys are one of the exemptions specifically in the bylaw. So this bylaw will not prohibit anyone from lobstering, active lobstering, in any part of Cohasset Harbor or Cohasset Cove. And if there are any other exemptions that have not been anticipated in the bylaw that really need a place on that list of exemptions, we should, we should put them there, make this the best bylaw that it can possibly be. It's not meant to impede anything other than true obstructions to free and open navigation. The, the second issue is with regards to the specific bounds of Cohasset Harbor or Cohasset Cove. The bylaw follows the language in the Acts, okay? And this, these words are the words directly out of the Acts, but they do have meaning. So the, the limit of Cohasset Harbor and Cove within the territorial limit of the Commonwealth, the land or, or the high water, okay? That's, that's the limit of the Commonwealth water. So those bodies of water are well-defined by the high water line in every direction, with the exception of Cohasset Harbor and its boundary to the north. So how far out does it extend? At some point, it becomes Mass Bay, and at some point, Massachusetts Bay becomes the Atlantic Ocean. To the best of my knowledge, anyway, none of those specific lines are defined anywhere, let alone in the Acts of 1953, Chapter 54. And I, I think there was fundamentally an aversion to trying to create artificial boundaries that, that didn't exist. These are the words that the legislature deliberated, chose, and ultimately passed as an act. So these are the words that were left. And I, I think with regards to the, the current impediment to navigation that's being contemplated, it's clearly well inside any reasonable interpretation of the northern bound of Cohasset Harbor, which, you know, you see those words, Cohasset Harbor, on various charts, maps, and other authorities, as, as being somewhere between the Glades and Whitehead. Sometimes it's a little further out, sometimes it's a little closer in. But in any case, with regards to, you know, the, the issue at hand today, it's well-covered by any definition of the northern bound of Cohasset Harbor. With regards to future impediments to navigation that could come up further out, that's, you know, that's a discussion that will have to take place at that time, based on the nature of those impediments and specific interpretation. I think the further out you go, the more open to interpretation it becomes. So that's with regards to the northern bound, or the nonexistence of a defined, specific northern bound. Clearly, there are channels in and out of Cohasset Harbor. I assume once you're out of the channel, you're out of Cohasset Harbor, but that may or may not be the case, and we're not going to take a position in the bylaw. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the bylaw of 1954, which, which followed the Acts of 1953. And so I, I heard earlier that we needed to share documents to the extent that, you know, that were being cited. I'll simply say that this is in the 1953 Annual Report for the annual town meeting, Article 49, which is the harbor bylaw, and appears on pages 58 and 59. Okay, so that's a publicly available document on our website. Hopefully, that checks the box with regards to making this publicly available. If not, I'll forward a copy, but I think it's already in the public domain, and now it's been cited appropriately. But I want to read the first two sections, okay? Section one, definition. The word harbor, as used in this article, shall mean all that body of water in Cohasset lying inside in line, projected across the channel, in a straight line from Whitehead Dolphin at Long's Point to White Rock, and by the same course, shall not include the channel extending seaward beyond that point. Okay? So there are two important things that I want to draw your attention to in this definition in section one. The first is, the chair was taken to make it clear that this definition only applied to this article, and it says the exact same thing in the bylaws on our website, okay? So once it went from an article to a bylaw, and changed the word article to bylaw, and it says the word harbor is used in this article or bylaw, shall mean, so only is used in this article or bylaw, okay? It does not in any way purport to retroactively interpret what the meaning of the harbor was in the Acts, nor does it have the authority to do so. The Acts are a state-level authority that's granted, and underneath that umbrella of authority, a municipality has the ability to act. In this case, it was an execution of, or an implementation of partial authorities that were granted by the Acts. Partial in the sense that it did not implement authority over all of the content or all of the topics that we were empowered to, empowered to pass bylaws and ultimately regulated force, okay? It only regulated, selected subset of them. So it's a partial implementation of powers, and it was only a partial implementation of location. So the Acts state the entirety of Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Cove. The bylaw shows a subset, okay, of Cohasset Harbor and Cohasset Cove for a very specific purpose, which leads you to section two. No purpose, no person shall operate a boat propelled in whole or in part by an internal combustion engine within Cohasset Harbor or Cove at a speed in excess of seven knots, okay? So it's pretty clear why that line was drawn where it was, which was from, you know, basically across the channel over to White Rock. That is the point in the early 1950s, when the harbor channel was being dredged, the moor and field was being dramatically expanded. There was an anticipated increase in the number of boats, an increase in the expected congestion of traffic in these waterways that was going to require the implementation of a speed limit, once people got in tight and approached the, the, approached the cove. So that line was drawn just outside the cove, in the southwestern corner of, of harbor in the channel, as people approached the cove, to get them to slow down to seven knots before streaming into the moor and field. So it's abundantly clear that this does not in any way purport to interpret or retroactively redefine what was intended by the Acts, and I just wanted to share that. And I, in the, in the spirit of cooperation, this is the first time that I've spoken publicly on this particular matter. I've been watching it for years. And I would offer a heartfelt invitation to everyone in Situate, both government and residences, or residents, excuse me, to embrace what really should be done with this particular area, which is to make it conservation. I think anyone that's ever spent any time out there always assumed it was conservation land, and frankly, was kind of shocked to learn, that at least I was shocked to learn, that it was even a possibility to put, you know, industrial aquaculture farm out in an area that's absolutely special, pristine, and totally preserved. So hopefully, that's where we land. I think that's something that would be strongly supported by residents in both towns, and hopefully, that, that is the common ground.
Tim, you want to? First, let me thank you all for coming, and those of you who are at home, I appreciate you tuning in. I think a couple of things. First of all, as I mentioned earlier, I really think this bylaw is not the perfect way of going forward, but it's the only way that many of us have found to stop the taking of Cohasset Harbor by Situate for an industrial oyster farm. Collaboration, cooperation is really the first thing that I would like to do. Some of you were perhaps here a number of years ago, when the then-chair of the Situate Select Board came here, made his pitch for an, an oyster farm that at the time, and I have the chart over there, 38 acres of Cohasset Harbor into an industrial farm. He heard the objections from the community and basically said, I hear what you say. I don't care. We're going forward. And I think we just heard that tonight from the current chair of Situate. They don't care, and if we pass this, they're going to sue. Let the residents of Situate know that their select board is planning to spend their tax dollars to sue Cohasset for the benefit of four or five individuals. Again, thank you all for coming. You will be hearing from me again, I'm sure. And thank you all for being here. Thank you. If anybody has anything that they would like to add? What? Yes, of course.
So there's been a few misstatements made a couple seconds ago. I came before the town of Cohasset, three years ago, I believe, to talk about the oyster farming. Never once did we say we were going to put 38. First of all, we showed the scope of the project that could do 32 acres of land. That keeps getting twisted. And what we were talking about doing was a pilot program of seven. We never mentioned anything more than seven. I've never planned to do anything more than seven, and that's the model that we brought before the town, our town and your town. So let that, that misconception be, be corrected. In terms of suing the town of Cohasset, this has nothing to do with oyster farms. So the, the, the problem that the town of Situate is going to have, and this is always, if the citizens agree, is that, that we feel that the town of Cohasset is overreaching their authority on property that belongs to the town of Situate. And we, we believe that our citizens will feel strongly about that, and we'll, we'll go down a path of litigation to make sure that whatever's Situate property, it's Neat Situate property, just as everyone in here would do for the town of Cohasset if it was happening, you know, on the other end of town for them, or if Situate was doing to them. So we certainly are not hoping to litigate. We have tried to collaborate, and we will continue to try and collaborate to figure out what the best situation is here. But I think that the town of Situate will demand that we go down that path if we feel that our authority over our property is being taken away from us. So, and again, I don't think anyone in this room would disagree with you if, if you were on the other, other side of the argument right now. A lot of the things that we're talking about, someone said a second ago that, that we're on the path and we're definitely doing it. That is not the case. We've not issued any licenses yet, and we're still deliberating over it. You mentioned correctly that there's four people that are interested in it, not 38 that keep getting thrown out there so that the numbers get, get thrown out of proportion. So there's a lot of facts here that are being distorted to help arguments. And I think the only thing that we're concerned about right now is not the oyster farm portion of it, because that's still under debate, but the fact that the town of Situate and Board of Selectmen feel that the town of Cohasset is taking, is extending their, their line of authority over a piece of property that is not theirs. And that is what we feel that the town of Situate will want to stand up for, for their rights in terms of that property. So that's all I want to say.
Very good, thank you. And you notice that we've made sure that Situate was, was able, and I see we have another member of the Situate Select Board, more than welcome, and we thank you for coming, because we are neighboring towns, and it's important that we do have a common, you know, interest. There is, some people, it's been alluded, the idea there's a nautical commons to sense essentially what the trustees of the reservation does to farmland and all that. Perhaps that's a solution for that nautical area. I know that there's support from both communities on that. But for tonight, I think we had a, a good exchange. A lot of facts came up, and the select board wanted each and every one of you to have the opportunity, and the facts that were brought up was part of the things that will go into our deliberation. So I'd like to thank everybody here for good citizenship. I took Civics 101 and believed it. And thank you again, and, and this will continue, and, and I'd all have a very pleasant. No, and we do have to technically close this meeting, which I would, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you.